Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, June the 5th. The time is now 7:00 PM. So we're going to call our regularly scheduled council meeting to order. Our invocation today is going to be led by, he's not ready, but Mr. Darryl Bailey. Would you please come up and give us your blessing, sir? You weren't ready for that, were you? Yeah, paybacks. Paybacks. If you'll do that, and then our pledge is tonight. Actually, will you do our American pledge? And, you know, Richard, you got the Texas pledge.
Let's pray. Oh, Heavenly Father, we come to you right now. Father, just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for what you're doing in this amazing city, Father. You're at work. So I pray for this meeting. I pray for wisdom, Father. Pray for guidance and discernment. As the councilmen are making decisions, Father, give them wisdom from on high. So we love you and we thank you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. We sure appreciate you. Okay. We're going to start out by doing two proclamations, and then we're going to have a departmental update from our IT department. Our first proclamation will be for Alvin Black Heritage Day, and then we're going to have a proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month.
Is anybody here for the museum for the proclamation? Come up, please. Y'all if you don't want to make it. Okay. Are you? It's not Alvin.
So the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Alvin Museum is presenting a Black Heritage exhibit that honors the contributions, experiences, and history of Black residents in the Alvin community, and whereas the exhibit recognizes individuals such as Doggy Smith, believed to be the first Black man to settle in the Alvin in the late 1930s, signifying an important chapter in the city's evolving history. And the establishment of Greater New Hope Baptist Church in 1942 on Second Street provided a spiritual and cultural foundation for Alvin's Black community and continues to serve as a lasting symbol of faith and resilience. And whereas this exhibit reflects the progress made through decades of change and acknowledges the importance of remembering and sharing all aspects of our community's past as we strive to build a more inclusive future. And whereas the Black Heritage Exhibit opened on May 17, 2025, and will remain on display through June 21, 2025, providing residents and visitors with an opportunity to engage with and learn from this important history. Now, therefore, I, Gabe Adami, as the Mayor of the City of Alvin, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim June 14 as Alvin Black Heritage Day in the City of Alvin, and encourage all residents to visit and reflect on the diverse stories that have shaped our city's history." Or Darryl? You want to talk?
Yes. Thank you.
I need it. I need it. Thank you for this. First things first, I want to say honor to our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. As I accept this proclamation, this isn't a normal proclamation. It doesn't just relate to the things that we see, but it also has a spiritual aspect. So take a second and realize that this is a Kairos moment or divine time to act. A special thank you to Mayor Adami, Paul Horn, our City Council, our City Manager, Honorable Roland, Donald Starkey, Adam Berkey, Lynette LaCompte, and to everyone involved in making this possible. When I look in the past and see where we were, sadness. When I look at where we are now, as a community, I'm encouraged. When I envision where we are going, I'm excited. So stay watchful. We are just getting started. The best is still to come, and we are better together for Alvin and beyond. Thank you.
Our next proclamation will be for Parks and Recs Month. So the folks of Parks and Rec, if you'll please come forward. This proclamation says, "Whereas July 2025 marks the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month, first launched in 1985 to recognize the vital role Parks and Recreation plays in enhancing the quality of life in communities across the country. And whereas this year's theme, Build Together, Play Together, celebrates the collective effort of full-time Park and Recreation professionals along with countless part-time staff, seasonal workers, and volunteers who work tirelessly to maintain and improve our local Parks and Recreation programs. And whereas Parks and Recreation services are essential to the health and well-being of our community, offering spaces and programs that foster lifelong relationships, friendships, family memories, and inclusive, active lifestyles. And whereas the positive impacts of Parks and Recreation can be seen every day in the laughter of children at play, the tranquility of walking trails, engagement of seniors and wellness programs, and the unity of neighbors gathering for community events. Now, therefore, I, Gabe Adami, as the Mayor of the City of Alvin, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Alvin, and encourage all residents to celebrate and support the dedicated professionals and volunteers who enrich our lives through parks, programs, and public spaces that help our community thrive." Thank you. Thank you, guys.
We appreciate it. Thank you for recognizing the importance of Parks and Recreation in our community. I just want to thank Heather, Michelle, Lori, Javier, Sam, Angel, and Lou, unsung heroes that take care of things behind the scenes. Very, very honored and proud to work with them, and we appreciate our community, and we're going to continue serving. Thank you very much.
Sorry, you have two minutes.
Oh, dude. Let me have it. Let's bring it on. Everybody, my name is Nick. I'm your Chief Information Technology Officer here for the City of Alvin. We have a lot of information to cover. We're going to try to go through as much as I can in my brief amount of time on what IT is and what we do. We've got a lot to cover, so we're going to go ahead and move on. So underneath me, we have Jordan Muton. He's our System Administrator. Andy Newman, he's our Network Administrator. Bobby Watson, he's our IT Technician. And Darian Bell, he is our newest addition as an IT Technician. These guys are great. Absolute gift of a team. They work really hard, and they work really well together. Absolute gem of a team. All right. So our scope of work, we're going to cover a couple of things on kind of IT in general. We work behind the curtain more than, I guess, any department, really. No one really knows exactly what we do, and it's a little bit by design for security purposes. But we provide services to 14 facilities across the city. At any of these facilities, we provide network, phones, PCs, MCTs. Every single facility the city owns, we are involved with giving technology to that facility. Within our scope of work, we have 303 licensed accounts, 31 servers that we maintain and protect, 32 MCTs that are being driven around in vehicles, 50 laptops for staff, 158 desktops, 91 access control doors, 172 security cameras, 212 city cell phones, 207 desk phones, and on average, 55 reported tickets. That ticket number fluctuates greatly. For example, this past week, we had 109 tickets. It happens. It goes up and down. So we're busy. We cover all of this stuff here. And to kind of go more into that, we actually, again, all PCs, laptops, MCTs, anything that has digital interface that you guys, the staff, would interact with, we're in that. We actually even build, custom build our own machines for staff. It actually saves a lot of money, and we get to custom tailor what these machines are, do for these staff members in these positions. We manage all the servers necessary for storage, login, security. You can't sit down at a computer and just log into a machine without interacting with our servers, but we also do a lot of, we maintain the file storage and various apps that staff use throughout the whole entire city. We also fight daily to keep the city's digital environment safe. We actually have a little excerpt here from last month's, one of the, this happens every day. This is just literally a snapshot of our firewalls getting sprayed with password attacks. As you'll see, some of these are from Russia, some of these are from India, a lot of them are from internal. This is something that happens to us every day. We're always in the forefront of trying to keep the city safe, and it's kind of, we hear about it frequently, but they're trying every single day. We also train staff monthly on phishing attempts. They do pretty well for the most part, but we're working on that. We're going to get them better. That's, and phishing is really one of our biggest threats. I'm sure every staff member can sit here and attest that they're getting really clever. They're sometimes hijacking people that we know, compromising their accounts, and then trying to come after us. We had an attack like that two weeks ago. So we're always trying to keep the city safe, and we're constantly watching out for ever engaging threats on our horizon. The landscape changes all the time, so we're trying to stay above water on that. In general as well, we have a philosophy that if we can do it ourselves, we're going to do it. We try not to contract out jobs. So if there's, example, like cable runs, we're going to do them ourselves. This is actually here, this picture here that you're seeing, we did a whole entire long cable run from the back of the PSF building to the fleet facility. Again, if we can do it, we're going to try to do it. We're not going to contract that out. That's money that doesn't need to be spent on that capacity. If there's cameras installations that we can do ourselves, we do it as well. Audio, video, we'll go into that here shortly, but we also do audio, video for all the events and stuff that people have across the city. And also, we build PCs. That's, again, something that we try to do to cut down on costs and make these machines custom tailored to staff. If you love metrics and graphs and all that stuff, here's a graph of our ticketing stuff. As you can see, it fluctuates greatly, but the trend overall is that it's increasing. We're having more and more needs come through every month, and that's okay. We're just rolling with the punches. To give you a bit more detail on these metrics, from 2023 to 2024, we had roughly 1,500 reported tickets. Last time I sat before you, Suzanne mentioned that, that's not always, you know, staff doesn't always put in tickets for stuff, and that's, we try to offer a white glove service where if they need help right away, we're going to get in there and help them right away. We try to write tickets afterwards because staff's got stuff they have to do. But for this year, 2024, 2025, we have almost doubled those tickets. This is symptomatic of us taking ownership of more stuff, of more programs, of more things across the city. We're trying to be good stewards of that and be more involved with everything. So, and again, this trend is only going up as we go through, so more tickets coming through. Under our recently completed projects, we're going to go a couple of things that we've done recently. I'm going to blur past these because there's a bunch. We're always doing stuff. So we did the EOC revamp, that picture you're seeing at the top right. Again, if we can do it ourselves, we're going to do it. That was a whole project where some vendor quoted us like a huge six, yeah, a five-digit number to get something done, and we were like, no, we can do this. And so Captain Arindel's like, let's get on, let's do it. So he got us a scissor lift, and IT and Captain helped. We did all this stuff. We did a mobile device and management adoption. We completed a complete firewall replacement for both PD and City Hall. We modernized our VPN solution for people communicating outside of our network in for like various reasons. We overhauled our Wi-Fi network at all facilities. We did that Recreation Security and Network Project. We recently developed the city's first mobile audio and video system. That's what we used at State of the City. We put a lot of effort into making that high quality, something that we can now not have to lean on other people, we can do it ourselves. We completed our first round of IT internships. We're looking to expand that more, more on that later. We did the Motorola mira1 rollout, which was tough. Yeah, tough is a good word for that. Canon Contract Consolidation, we got all of our printers replaced and refreshed and down into one contract. We did the security camera upgrade, the Bob S. Owen pool. We completely overhauled our power from APD. We discovered from Barrel that there was a couple of things we needed to do for power. That was a complete project that we did. Fiber ring for the city, all city buildings, we did the design and RFP process. And now for upcoming projects, I'm going to breeze through these again. We're going to be replacing all these MCTs in conjunction with PD staff. Y'all voted on that recently. We're going to be completing a citywide fiber ring connecting all of our buildings. We're going to be applying layer three switches at all city facilities for security on our network. We're going to be refreshing our virtual server infrastructure, multi-factor authentication for all staff, one of the major cybersecurity updates that we're hoping to do. We're going to be completing the Idemia AFIS systems for courts. We're expanding our internship program with a couple of the features that, feedback that we got from this last round. Completing the overhaul to the citywide file storage, many people can kind of attest that that's something that we've been needing to do for some time. We're also consolidating our active directory domains, developing SOPs to comply with NIST, and modernizing our security cameras and access controls, and consolidating all of our city-owned domains and services into one location. So that's a lot. Does anybody have any questions? They gave me a short amount of time, and I could seriously, I could pull a poll and sit here for probably 25 minutes, but I tried. Is he here? Yes, he's here. Excellent. I could pull a poll, and I could sit here all day, man. But if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you guys have about that.
So are you, there's only four people who work in the IT department?
Me and four people, that's correct. We, there's five of us. That's something that we're kind of working on, is getting more people. We're exhausted. You catch us on a Thursday, Thursday, we're in zombie mode, is what we call it. We go home like zombies, and we're always sweating.
That's what my question was about. Do you feel like that's enough people to handle the current workload? Because you said that it's increasing.
We've been talking with management about getting, increasing our staffing. We're hoping to kind of establish a metric for as the city grows, we expand IT, because it's kind of complicated. You look at other cities, and they may have, they may look at one metric, which is the number of staff members, right? You can look at Manville, I came from Manville in the past. They have four staff members and probably 160, 170 at the time, but only three buildings. So when you start weighing the 14 buildings and the various network needs that go along with that, and also the various business use cases that each department has, that's what makes us kind of unique in that we are trying to establish a metric for however many buildings we own versus how many departments, how the departments grow and how they adopt these new technologies to get more people. But again, that's something we've been talking with management.
We have added three positions in the last two years.
Yeah, to clarify, in the past, it was just two people. It was me and one other person.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it was exhausting. But we've added three, and yeah, there's, we've been in talks for expanding responsibly.
Do you think I owe Dan a lot?
Dan Davis?
Yeah. No, no. Dan Kalinsky.
Oh, yeah, me and Dan are tight. Dan the man.
You're asking for a lot more money and stuff lately.
Oh, yeah, no. I call him Dan the man, he calls me Nick the person, so, I mean, we're tight. We're tight like that. So, no, we, yeah, me and Dan, we know.
Quit hanging out with Dan so much. You asked for too much.
I know. Sorry, dude.
Is it appropriate for me to ask a question about the interim program? You mentioned that you're expanding it. I'm just kind of interested because we had talked about it. I'm just kind of interested in the interim program.
Yeah, so the internship program, it was great. We actually got to pull two students from ACC, kind of walk them through on, I'm going to put this, we try very hard to be responsible. We're not just throwing millions of dollars out for no reason, like some other corporations can kind of spend that kind of money. So we have to get creative to find solutions and do them well. So it's a great opportunity for someone to kind of see what it's like to figure things out, but also do it with excellence. Because if you don't do it with excellence, there's problems and stuff of that nature. So, yeah, we got to bring two people along. We did like what we call a shadow internship, where basically whatever we were doing, they were shadowing with us, and they were getting to kind of see, ask questions, expand on that knowledge. I'm hoping to potentially gather more people and do that, but we have things that we need to figure out in regards to space is kind of one of our biggest struggles. We don't really have a lot of place to sit people, so we wind up stacking very closely. Like my, one of my staff members couldn't scoot back because we were trying to position the interns in a way they could see things, so, yes, but more in the future, for sure.
Thank you, Nick. Any other questions? We appreciate everything you do, keeping it safe.
I just want to say thanks. Sounds like y'all are killing it.
We're trying really hard. Thank you. But, yeah.
Thank you, man. Appreciate you. All right. Next, next we're going to public comment. I think we've got one public comment. Gail Froberg, would you please come forward? There she is.
Hi. It's kind of weird having people behind me, but I'm Gail Froberg. I'm running for Justice of the Peace Precinct 1, Place 2, and I feel like that I am the most qualified candidate for the position. There are either six or seven other people running for this position, and I'm not sure exactly that number because I think somebody may have dropped, but I feel like I have the most qualifications. I am a Master Peace Officer. I've been in law enforcement on the street for over 20 years now. The last five years have been at a local constable's office, learning civil law. I am a longtime, almost lifelong, Brazoria County resident. I came here at nine months old, so I got here as quick as I could, and I've lived in Alvin. I have an Alvin address. I don't live in the city proper, but I have an Alvin address, and I've lived here since 2003. So I've been here for a long time. We built our forever home here, and the reason that that is important is because the Justice of the Peace right now is currently housed in a little strip center over by Tractor Supply, and the county is going to be building a new office up by Ron Carter. I am the only candidate in the Alvin area. Everyone else lives down south, so I think accessibility is huge in this position. I've been on the street long enough to know that when you call for a Justice of the Peace, you need one right now. Not in an hour, in a couple of hours, you need one right now because it's important. And a lot of people don't know what the Justice of the Peace does, so I want to put that out there right quick, that if you don't know what a Justice of the Peace does, please look it up before you decide who you're going to vote for and see if they have the qualifications that might help with that position, because they don't just marry people. That's what I've gotten from so many people. Why would you want a position where you just marry people? Well, actually, that's an elective for a justice. They don't have to. They do things like all of your civil cases, anything under $20,000. They do all of your writs. A lot of people don't even know what a writ is, but like I say, I've been in civil law now for, since 2019, a little over five years, and I've been learning that for 40 hours a week from every day, all the time, and I feel like it's really important to know what a justice does. And again, my name is Gail Froberg. Please look me up on social media. It's G-A-L-E, not G-A-I-L, or throw a Y in there. G-A-L-E. I have some flyers, and I'll be here till the end of the meeting if anybody would like one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. See, next we are going to have a public hearing to receive comment regarding an ordinance establishing standards of care for youth recreation programs conducted by the City of Alvin Parks and Recreation Department for elementary-age children, ages five through 13. With the time being 7:25, we will open up our public hearing. If anyone has a comment or would like to speak on this matter, please come forward. Again, this is a public hearing to receive comment regarding ordinance for standards of care for youth for the Recreation Department. If you have something you'd like to say, please come forward. Nobody? And we'll close this public hearing at 7:26 PM. We'll be going to the consent agenda. Councilman Garvey, anything you'd like to remove from the consent agenda?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
No, Sir.
Then I will entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Items approved on the consent agenda are the City Council meeting minutes for May 15th. Item B, Ordinance 25M, establishing standards of care for youth recreation programs conducted by the City of Alvin Parks and Recreation Department for elementary-age school children ages five through 13, providing for compliance with state law, providing a savings clause, providing for severability clause, and providing an effective date. Item C, a contract with Grant Works, Inc., for the grant administration services related to the Texas GLO Community Development and Revitalization Grant in connection with flood and drainage improvements along Durant Street and the M1 Crossing, and authorize a mayor to execute all necessary documents. Item D, consider a fourth amendment to the lease agreement by and between the City of Alvin, Texas and a home rural municipality in the state of Texas as successor in interest to YMCA of the Greater Houston Area and Memorial Hermann Health System and Texas Nonprofit Corporation for approximately 3,050 square feet of space within the Alvin Recreation Center with Memorial Hermann Hospital System for the purpose of providing physical therapy, rehabilitation, treatment, and related patient care, and authorize a mayor to sign upon legal review. Item E, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase 1, Section 2, being a planned unit development of 19.61 acres situated in the CM Hayes survey, abstract 534, City of Alvin, Brazoria County, Texas. Item F, a final plat of Preservation Creek Phase 2, Preservation Creek Boulevard, Segment 2, being a planned unit development of 10.06 acres situated in the CM Hayes survey, abstract 534, and WDC Hall survey, abstract 69, being out of Lot 6 and 7 of the Conawal Texas Company subdivision as recorded in Volume 2, Page 53 of the Brazoria County plat records, City of Alvin, Brazoria County, Texas. Item G, a master preliminary plat of Berry Creek, a planned unit development being 107.10 acres of land out of the Hooper and Wade, Wade A 420, Brazoria County, Texas. Item H, a final plat of Parkside Trails, a subdivision of 24.522 acres, 1,068, 186 square feet, situated in the HG and BRRR County Survey, abstract 225, City of Alvin, Brazoria County, Texas. Item I, accept the resignation of Jake Starkey from the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Item J, accept the resignation of Ashley Davis from the Planning Commission. Item K, consider the cancellation of June 19, 2025 City Council meeting, and item L, the cancellation of July 3, 2025 City Council meeting. Mayor?
Good job, Dixie. Appreciate you. Next, we'll move on to other business, the first being Consider Resolution 24R18, authorizing the publication of the Notice of Intention to issue certificates of obligation, authorizing the preparation of preliminary official statements and notices of sale, declaring intent to reimburse certain prior capital costs, and providing for other matters related thereto.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Tonight before you is a resolution authorizing the publication of the city's intent to finance a new City Hall with certificates of obligation. As you know, office space is and has been maxed out at City Hall for quite some time. We have actually converted closets into office space, as well as hallways into office space. As a result, staff asks your consideration to commence the process to obtaining the funding for a new City Hall, and this process starts with the publication of a notice of intent. Should you approve this resolution, the maximum principal amount that we will be able to issue is 25 million. However, state law does mandate that the notice of intent disclose an estimated principal and interest amount in total, which equates to approximately 51 million over the next 30 years. So this resolution does not authorize the issuance of the bonds. It only authorizes the publication of the notice of intent to issue and gives our bond council authorization to start that process. We will publicize this notice on our city website and the local paper, as well as on our social media platforms. And if all goes well, according to plan, council will consider authorizing the issuance of the certificates of obligation at the August 7 City Council meeting. If you have any more questions, I have Jonathan Frails from Bracewell, our bond attorneys here. Otherwise, we ask that you consider approving Resolution 25R18.
If there's no questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 25R18, authorizing the publication of the notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, authorizing the preparation of preliminary official statements and notices of sale, declaring intent to reimburse certain prior capital costs, and providing for other matters. declaring intent to reimburse certain prior capital costs and providing for other matters related thereto.
Please vote. Mr. Frails, thank you for being here.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. You always answer the hard questions, don't you? All right. Item B, consider a variance request from the homeowners at 1823 Meadowview Drive from Chapter 21 subdivision of property development, Section 2137A, to encroach 22 feet into the 25-foot front building setback and two feet into the 5-foot building setback for construction of a carport.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hi, how are y'all? What you have before you is a variance request submitted by the homeowners to construct a carport on their property. To achieve this, they would need to encroach 22 feet into the 25-foot front building setback and two feet into the 5-foot setback, 5-foot side building setback, excuse me. They would like to do this to protect their vehicles that do not fit in the standard-sized garages that we have these days. Planning Commission approved at the May 20th meeting and staff recommends approval.
Very good. I believe we recently, council recently approved a variance similar to this for one of their neighbors. Is that correct?
Well, I know in September that Michelle brought a variance before you guys and, and gals, excuse me, sorry. But the carport, there's, there's been quite a few.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve variance requests from the homeowners at 1823 Meadowview Drive from Chapter 21 subdivision of property development, Section 21 through 37A, pardon me, to encroach 22 feet into the 25-foot front building setback and two feet into the 5-foot side building setback for the construction of a carport.
Please vote. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Next, consider Ordinance 25N, an ordinance releasing approximately 90.81 acres of land from the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Alvin, Texas, providing findings of fact containing a severability clause and providing for other matters related thereto.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We received this petition from the landowner. And both Paul and I have spoken with him. He sends his apologies. He was hoping to be able to be here tonight, but he's out of town. This is a property, well, you can see that depicted on your map. It's nowhere near any services or anything like that. And so he is looking at, I think it's a small development that he's looking at building out there. So, and like the others that we've had before, and I know that there have been concerns about these types of petitions just for our new council members, the city doesn't really have the option of saying no to these. And so one of the things that staff has started doing is speaking with the developers, speaking with the people that are bringing these petitions forward to see if there's anything that the city can do to possibly keep them from being released from the ETJ. Ultimately, what we don't want to wind up happening is that there's these little pockets that are ultimately really, ultimately released from the ETJ that, and then we start annexing and then we have these little pieces that we are not able to annex. So we're trying to be more mindful about, even though there's nothing we can do, because even if you vote against it, it still happens. But just being more mindful and more communicative with the people that are coming into our general area, looking to, looking to develop.
What if, what if no emotions too? Don't vote on it?
It'll still pass by operation of law after the 45th day after the, yeah.
And I'll say, I reiterate for the guys that are new that I think we should not vote yes on this. Not anything to do with the location or the property owner or the intent of usage. Just the fact that the state's compelling us to vote on something that we, that, that doesn't affect it at all. I feel like that's odd. So I feel like it's in the best interest of the city to just always vote no on these things because we don't have a choice. And if it comes up in litigation later, you know, we have some, we have some leeway because we didn't already agree on it.
That and take that a little bit further. On the previous items that have come before this council, we've actually taken no action just because, just because of that and because of lawsuits and stuff. I do have a question. So I did, we read your information and the stuff that was provided. So I understand it's 98 acres. What was, what was the development fee? Well, because the argument is, is that he didn't want to pay the development fees because there's no, no services out there?
Yeah, but I'm not sure what the development fees would have, it would have been for the plating and for.
So if we, and so the reason why I ask that as preemptive, this other question is, is that why did we offer to waive those fees and waive that, our process, giving him that option?
I don't necessarily think that was, when I talked to him, I just talked to him today. We'd been playing phone tag. But when I talked to him today, it really wasn't about that. It was just really like that the city services, that there was no way. He didn't really feel like there was a reason to stay in the ETJ and possibly whenever sometime down the future, when there was no possibility of connecting to city services at this time. That, that was, that was the thought. That was, when I spoke with him, it was more.
He won and still doesn't have any.
I'm sorry?
He, he won. He's, he's getting out of the, he's getting out of the ETJ, but he still doesn't have any services. That doesn't make any sense, but it's just, I mean, that's just my, my opinion on that, that matter is I, I really, I know I'm, I'm very vocal about this on every single time that this comes before council, especially the next one that's about to just come up. And I'm going to even get even more vocal with that one, is the fact that I think staff and you, as well as other key staff members that are involved in the development process, need to push very hard to see how we can incentivize these business owners, these land developers and potential developers into not leaving our ETJ. I think it's very important that we maintain our ETJ and we maintain our position within Brazoria County and the state of Texas. And I think it sucks that the, and I've said that a number of times, that the state legislators put this on us and we're not doing anything, I mean, this, this is not us. They tried to fix a Band-Aid somewhere else and they, they messed up. And it sucks that we are going through another legislative session and they didn't fix it and they knew that there was a problem. That's just my opinion.
We'll entertain a motion or not.
Is that lawsuit still going on?
My understanding, yeah.
Scott Nash, y'all familiar with that? Several municipalities suing the state because of this. So Keiko brought up a good point. If we release it and vote yes and the lawsuit goes through and the cities win, we have no grounds to take that back. If we vote no or take no action, it gives us some kind of leeway to take action and take it back if the lawsuit goes through. So.
Once again, I'll entertain a motion. If you're going to vote no, then you need to make a motion to vote no.
You take no action.
How about move to deny Ordinance 25N?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Releasing approximately 90.81 acres of land from the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Alvin, Texas, providing findings of fact containing a severability clause and providing for other matters related thereto.
So you're voting to deny. No, you vote yes to deny.
You vote yes to deny it. Yes. If you want to deny it.
Did you abstain?
Do you want to change your vote? I mean, I can mark it out. It's okay, okay. You hit the wrong button.
Cleric lawyer.
Motion, motion passes unanimously.
All right. Consider Ordinance 25O, an ordinance releasing approximately 179.8 acres of land from the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, providing findings of fact containing a severability clause and providing for other matters related thereto.
Mayor and Council, this is another one. This one is a little bit different in the sense that it is close to, or next to Iowa City. I mean, yeah, sorry. It's been a long week. Who said that earlier? Iowa Colony city limits. And this tract, once it's released from the ETJ, I think the developer might be here. There is somebody here from the developer. The, when I spoke with the attorney, the, the impression is this is part of a bigger development agreement that the developer has with Iowa Colony. This tract, as well as two other tracts, three other tracts, will be part of a whole development agreement and probably annexed into Iowa Colony. So that, that's, yeah, pretty far out map where it is, but. So it's, it's a little bit different in the sense that it's not just property sitting out there. That's not going to be part of anything, that it, it is going to be absorbed into Iowa Colony and, and developed pursuant to their development agreement. So again, you have the same options, but the developers here, if you have any questions, and so.
That's not going to mess with our contiguous ETJ, is it?
It's just south of it. It's just south of it, but this is, but the potential is, now, this is where I said that I was going to be a little bit more vocal with this one, is the fact that there's a potential to the land to the east of it is roughly about 5, 5,000 to, to 7,500 acres of undeveloped land. So this is just a piece of it and, and I don't like the fact that a developer agreement was negotiated. And were we involved in that process? Because I think it's a little bit unethical that, that another city jumps in to our territory that's potentially could have been ours and they jump into ours and basically negotiate and says, hey, if you can go follow this state law, remove yourself from the DGJ and then potentially you can come over here and reach and grab us and we'd rather be with y'all. And then if you were going to tell me that the reason why is because we don't have city utilities out there? I'm sorry, Iowa Colony doesn't own any city utilities. They don't have a water or sewer. It's all mud districts. They have, they have mud districts. They have mud districts. They don't own anything. So my question is going to be is, are they going east? Are y'all going east with the, the other two or three developments? Or y'all, is that inside already in their city limits?
It's already in their city limits. Yes.
All right. Again, I don't, I don't like it. I think, I mean, if we need to plant a police officer out there to, to basically go and patrol those areas so we can make ourselves more visible?
It's simply because their requirements are better for them. That's what.
It's the land. I mean, it's going over there, but, but how, how.
Development requirements are lower.
This is our third development or third development for Iowa Colony that they're just chipping away and moving out further and further and further and getting into our area. We're never going to grow. Because we're not, I mean, we got 114, 62, and 288. That's it. But eventually, once we're there, we got that little piece, but we were supposed to have 95% more and it's just being chipped away.
But none of that, I mean, the state's allowing it, so none of that matters. We can't change it. I understand why, as a developer, you would do that.
I get to talk. This is my only spot to talk.
I know, but it doesn't change anything.
Come on, Keiko.
We don't patrol in the ETJ anyway.
He's, he's assisting other agencies.
Oh, that's what he's doing. Okay. Good, good job, chief.
Matter of fact, I think we sent the drone team out to a call today, didn't we, sir? There we go. Assisting other agencies.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to deny Ordinance 25O, releasing approximately 179.8 acres of land from the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city, providing findings of fact containing a severability clause and providing for other matters related thereto.
Second.
Please vote. Yes means no, Chris.
Motion passes unanimously.
We're good, Dixie? We're good? Okay. Thanks. Okay, item E, consider Resolution 25R19, authorizing the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed, releasing and abandoning unimproved 20-foot platted, unopened roads over and across subject property as set out in the plat of the Williford and Emmons addition to Alvin Record in Volume 15, Page 592 of the deed records of Brazoria County, Texas, save and does accept those portions previously closed by Order Number Five of the Commissioners Court of Brazoria County, recorded in Volume 954, Page 224 of the deed records of Brazoria County, Texas.
Okay, so this is property that Livingstone Church owns, that this is, we had another, a couple of months ago, we had a release of an easement for the Tech Dot 99 Expansion Project. This is another parcel. So when Tech Dot went in to acquire this land from, or, or obtain, I guess the easements to this land from Livingstone's church, they found that we have old, platted, abandoned roads in that property that are never going to be part of our, part of anything related to the city. And so in order for them to have clean title, in order to give Tech Dot the property that they need for their expansion, they needed to clear everything from it. And interestingly enough, in your packet, there is the 1966 order from Commissioners Court really closing the, closing the old, closing the old portions of the roadway, so. Yes.
Any questions?
Livingstone's Church or Tech Dot?
Tech Dot.
Some of the Tech Dot roads.
Research, we didn't pay for this property or anything for that right of way or dedication.
I, not that I know of, or not that has been made aware to me. I'll put it that way. I don't know.
Mayor, make a motion to move to approve Resolution 25R19, authorizing the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed, release and abandonment, unimproved 20-foot platted, unopened road over and across subject property as set out on plat of Wilford and Emmons addition to Alvin, recorded in Volume 15, Page 592 of the deed records of Brazoria County, Texas, saved and accept those portions previously closed by Order Number Five of the Commissioners Court of Brazoria County, recorded in Volume 954, Page 2, 2, 4 of the deed records of Brazoria County, Texas.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item F, consider appointment to fill an unexpired term on the planning commission.
Mayor and Council, yeah, this is just to fill Ashley's place on the planning commission. You have some candidates in your packet, so I'll leave that up for discussion.
Very good. Who wants to start discussion or, or, or make a, make an appointment, recommendation?
I have a question.
Sure.
Because I'm, you know, a realtor and the Impact Fee Advisory Committee was part of the planning commission, you know, every so often. And so a realtor was required for that committee. I went and I just did some research. I didn't see any realtors on there. So I was just wondering if that will be a separate committee going forward or how that would be handled.
Good question. Yeah, would you like to answer that?
We could probably appoint the planning commission and then find a realtor to also, even if one of you maybe wanted to, I don't know, we'd have to check on that, but. Yeah, it's every, what, four years, five years?
Yeah, four, five years.
Yeah, we could just assign the planning commission. This is my opinion. And then just find a realtor who would be willing to serve in that capacity as well.
Are any candidates here right now? Anybody? Seth?
It's, it's nice to see someone, somebody who, who had their name on the ballot that's still willing to, to come in and serve. Thank you for, for your application. You're on. You're applied for, for both, huh?
I move to appoint Seth Karosko to fill the unexpired term of Ashley Davis through December 31st, 2026.
Please vote.
Councilmember Moore. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Congratulations, sir. Now we're going to consider appointment to fill the unexpired term on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. This is to fill the, the. an expired term on the Economic Development Advisory Committee. This is to fill the unexpired term for Jake Starkey, who resigned again. So...
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is again, to fill this vacancy on the Economic Development Advisory Committee.
Any applicants in the crowd for this one?
Mayor, move to approve Seth Karosko to Economic Development Advisory Committee through December 31st, 2026.
All right. Well, we've got a first and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Congratulations, sir. And next, we will, let's see, consider if any requests from individual council members. Gervais, anything you want to add?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor. No, Mayor.
Very good. And now, we'll move on to reports from the city manager.
Yes, Mayor and Council. On Wednesday, June 11th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., the city will host a Hazard Mitigation Plan update at the Fire EMS station. This is an opportunity for the residents to provide input on the city's commitment to reducing the impact of natural disasters. There is a survey also available on the city's social media and the website, to get your input in there early. On Friday, July 4th, at 9:00 p.m., fireworks will be launched at Briscoe Park. In celebration of Independence Day, visitors can park at ACC, the Recreation Center, and other areas around Briscoe Park. Also, today, Text dot, the Text dot Gordon Street overlay project from South State Highway 35 to 1462, originally planned to begin in June and July, has been tentatively rescheduled to begin in August. And so, once we receive detailed communication from Text dot, we will inform the community. And last but not least, I just wanted to give kudos to Adam Berkey, Mr. Adam Berkey, and Donna Starkey, and Darryl Bailey. I was on the Black Heritage Committee, but they, I mean, they really did the research, and they worked tremendously hard on that. So, I just want to tell you, I really appreciate that, especially being African-American. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, next, items of community interest. Start with you. Over here, Ms. Councilmember Davis, anything you want to tell the community?
No, Mayor.
Okay.
I just want to take a moment to wish my eldest son, Adam, a happy 15th birthday. Mama loves you.
Well, happy birthday.
Fire Department 5K is 20 days away, June 28th. Price already went up, so sorry.
It's for good cause, all right?
Yeah, it's fundraiser.
Well, I think next Saturday, there's going to be a group of us playing dodgeball, Dodge for a Cause, out there. Where are we going to be, at the Pearland Rec Center?
Yes, sir.
So, if you'd like to see a bunch of old guys hurt themselves, come watch us play dodgeball.
We almost won last year.
We did almost win. But other than that, that's all I've got. That's all I've got.
Wanted to give a kudos to Brandon. I'd reported something a couple of days ago, late in the evening, about a road driveway issue to a citizen. And next morning, they called and said that they'd already come out to address it. I know we're used to that. We're used to that kind of service, but I still want to point that out every once in a while, and I appreciate the response to your team. And thank you, Unruh, for helping me handle that.
I feel like I should have something, but I don't.
It's okay. Long words are fixing to play.
I'm good. Real quick, Mayor, I know the game starts in four minutes. I just want to shout out to all the high school seniors that graduated here from Alvin. Also, my stepson graduated as well. And my biological son graduates tomorrow from Millby High School. And a special shout out to Michelle's son, salutatorian Alvin High School. Good job. Your son, your son gave a great speech. Great speech. Shows he was raised right. Congratulations. That's it, Mayor.
Very good. Well, then, with that, at 7:55 p.m., we are adjourned.